And no school on October 10th, that Monday. Any questions? And goodbye.
Rebecca, the Brown Center, is that, um, that's freshmen or sophomores?
For what?
The Brown Center.
Oh, the Brown Center is freshmen.
Okay, yes, thanks.
Alex, the house lights just went down.
I'm gonna take that as my cue.
I think.
Others from the district? And announcements, commendations, and comments from the board? Denise?
I attended the grades five and eight open house last night and just was very impressed with everything, all the classrooms, and they were set up, and it looked like there was a great turnout, and really appreciate that opportunity to kinda see the classrooms in action a little bit.
Others? Alright, we'll move right into district reports then. So our first one is Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. I didn't know you were interrupting everything. Assistant Superintendent.
Yeah.
Good evening. I wanted to take this opportunity just to share with you some of the work that happened over the summer with faculty around curriculum. We had three departments working over the summer and starting the curriculum review process, the Science Department, Health Department, and World Language Department. So in the backup, you have some of that work that we engaged in, that the faculty engaged in. As you can see, the two that are in there, the Health and the World Language, all Health teachers and all World Language teachers have participated, which is wonderful, really is. This is a K through, K through 12 process, and so to get everybody together for scope and sequence for curriculum review is very, very important. There's multiple phases that we work through when we look at curriculum. So we have a, the first phase really is an evaluation and research phase, and then we get into the writing process of writing the curriculum and revising. And so because those two departments had done so much previous work around the research and also the evaluation of programming, they actually were further along and they could write, they could produce some written documentation. And so they will go through the implementation process next year, and it continues to cycle through. And then next year, we will have different departments starting, starting the process, and it will be Social Studies, Physical Education, Counseling, and SEL. So that work will happen over the summer. They'll begin the process. The other departments that started this year will continue to work, but they'll just be at a different point in that process. So we're, we're very excited. The Science Department is still working through what we started this year, and they'll, they'll be working through the writing phase into next year also. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about that. Great, thank you very much.
And the Superintendent report?
Yeah, I was just wondering whether I should tell Alex that we're getting that feedback. We're still getting some kind of feedback, Alex. Okay.
Yep.
Alright, thank you. I wanna take a moment to welcome Jasmine Daniels to the district. Jasmine is the new Aramac employee and Director of our Maintenance and Custodial Staff. She came from Georgia, just around the corner, but she grew up in New York, and she's worked for Aramac for...
Nine years.
Nine years. I was gonna say eight, so I almost remembered it right. We're excited to bring Jasmine on board as our new Director of Facilities. So Jasmine's gonna give us a brief report on where we are on, on summer projects.
Thank you, Dr. Morris. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. I am very excited to hold the position as Facilities Director for Oyster River School District. My family and I have been welcomed with open arms here, and I do wanna just say we appreciate that from the bottom of our hearts. So I'm gonna give you some updates on the projects. As you all know, I have not been here from beginning to end, but I have done my best to research to answer any questions that you may have tonight. So if I do not have those when you ask, I'd be happy to follow up with those and give you those by the end of the week. The first project that we had was the Maslay Library Door for the double doors to section the rooms off, and it is completed as of last week and functional. The next one is the High School Nurses Suite. This was a very large project. The teachers and the nurses are very appreciative for the support that they received on this project. This one has been completed. The only small step that we will add is a privacy curtain for the students so they can feel that they are not walking into just an open environment, and they can feel secure with their confidentiality. The next one is the Moheramit Air Handlers that have been completed and are functional. The only two things that we lack are the smoke detectors and sprinklers, which will be installed this Friday, so that job will be completed this Friday. The next one is the Moheramit Retaining Wall. This one was completed on September the 7th. The last, the last part that we have for this is to mulch the area to look visually appealing, and we will do that on Friday. The next, the next one is the High School NPR Stage. I know that Dr. Morris is very interested to know these dates. We will start on this October the 1st. Unfortunately, we've had some delays due to the lack of staff with the company, but they have ensured us that they will be here October 1st and the 8th to finish this project. The other one is the High School Science Wing, the AC Project. We have one of three units that has been delivered. The other two will be delivered on the 26th and installed on October the 8th. So that project should be done and completed on October the 10th. The last one, which I know a lot of, a lot of you are probably wondering about, is the Tennis Court. This one was delayed for a month due to one of our vendors having a lack of staff issues as well, but we only have just a few more touches to do, such as reinstall the curving on the bus entrance and pave the walkways and bleacher, and we did get a projected date to be completed as of October the 3rd. And those are the updates for the projects. Does anyone have any questions?
Heather?
The multipurpose room stage, how long is that project supposed to take until completion?
He gave me the date of October the 12th to be completed, but they're gonna have to work three days. They're gonna have to work on the weekends because it's a rather loud project, so they don't wanna disrupt the kids.
Great, thanks.
I know this is not part of our regular CIP, but part of the construction project here at the middle school, but do you know what the status is of the, of the turf field?
I do. I have an update on that as well. So we did get some of the delivery of the turf. There was, let's see, a portion of it that was not delivered, but is projected to be delivered on Tuesday. They still give the same date to be completed towards the end of October, from my understanding, for getting updates, but I will verify that and let you know. Yeah. Any more questions?
Thank you, Jasmine.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you all.
So at the last meeting, I tried to share some public service announcements that were funded by the American Automobile Association, starring our local SRO and Mike McCann. So Alex, if you could run those, there are all, there's five of them at the very, very shot.
Let's be prepared and alert. Hi, I'm Carrington Cosell with the Durham Police Department.
And I'm Tom Barrett with AAA Northern New England. AAA is proud to sponsor and be with the Durham Police Department on the Traffic Safety Campaign. Schools open, drive carefully.
As school starts this year, let's keep our children safe with some simple driving tips.
Don't drive intoxicated. Lives depend on it.
Drive slowly in and around residential and school areas.
When you see a school bus, red lights come on, stop.
Obey the school's speed limit zones.
School, children will be crossing the road. Be alert for them crossing.
Turn your headlights on so other children and other drivers can see you.
In the morning and in the afternoon, children will be coming to school and leaving school. Be prepared and be alert.
Ditch the distractions. Schools open, drive carefully.
Hi, I'm Emily Festa of the Durham Police Department. I wanna remind everyone of some safety tips as the school year starts. For everyone's safety, watch your speed. Make sure you reduce your speeds in the school zones. Stop means stop. Make sure you come to a complete stop at each stop sign and look for children that are crossing. Put your phones down. Lives depend on it. Distraught walking is not safe. Watch for bicycles. Allow three feet of passing distance between your vehicle and the bicycle. Schools open, drive safe.
Hi, I'm Officer Nicolosi, and I'm with the Durham Police Department. Today, I'm gonna go over some tips with you for your child to ride safely on the bus to school. The first tip is going to be at least arrive to the bus stop five minutes early. That way, the bus driver can see your child as they're driving down the street. Your second tip is to at least remain five giant steps from the curb, so that way, nothing can harm you from the road. Number three, make sure that the bus driver can see your child and your child can see the bus driver. They'll always give a thumbs up to say that it's safe for them to get on the bus. Make sure the bus comes to a complete stop and that the door's open, and that will allow the child to get onto the school bus. After that, make sure if you're ever gonna cross the bus, you do it in the front of the bus and not to the rear. This way, when the bus stops, it is safe to go, and all other cars around the bus should be stopped as well. So remember, if the bus flashes yellow, that means it's preparing to stop. If the stop sign comes up and it's flashing red, that means that you shall not pass that bus. It is illegal to do so, and you might hurt a kid if you try to pass the bus illegally. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike McCann, Assistant Principal of the Oyster River High School.
And I'm Officer Nicolosi from the Durham Police Department. Schools open, drive carefully.
So I wanna thank AAA for sponsoring those public service announcements, and thank the officers of the Durham Police Department for participating in them. I think that when we do things as a community, it resonates with our community, so, very, very cool. I also want to report tonight in relation to our first of the year DEIJ Committee Meeting. It's next Tuesday at 6:00 PM in the high school library. The agenda will be posted on our website. Then there's just two issues that I wanted to talk about that are happening in Concord. I gave you a, a handout, a summary of the co-op bills that are being heard in workshop tomorrow. I plan on being there in the morning. None of those bills are beneficial to co-ops. They're all attempts to either make it easier for co-ops to be disbanded or have negative consequences on how we do business. When asked last year why these bills were out there, it's because they haven't been reviewed since 1954. Well, review them and find out what's going on that's positive in co-ops before you start taking them apart. Really a fundamental change in practice. So those summaries are there, and I'll be there tomorrow morning. The other piece of regulation, not law, that's happening is a complete rewrite of Section 306, which are the regulations that govern public schools. And those rewrites are incredibly detrimental to the tradition of local control and school systems across New Hampshire. In addition, they're lowering, lowering the standard by which teachers, in fact, they're taking the word "teachers" out of law and supplementing it with people who could go into the classroom because they have a particular skill. Like Brian has this business background based on this new regulation. He could be the educator in front of a group of kids. And so the two issues that are really, really scary are state control of the schools, which is not the tradition of New Hampshire, and the idea that teachers don't need to be certified to be in front of our kids. Alex, we're losing the lights again. So part of what's going on is a, is a listening tour across New Hampshire, and we have volunteered to be a site for one of those listening tours. I think it's really important that as many communities as possible across the state participate in these listening tours, even if it takes us months to go through it, because these regulations literally are how we operate as, as public school systems in, in the state. So those are the two issues I wanted to make you aware of. I know that legislation like this is always important to the board, so I wanted to make sure I brought it front and center. Questions?
Alright, thank you, Dr. Morris. Next up is the Business Administrator. Nothing tonight? Alright, and then the Student Representative.
Yeah, so Senior T-shirts are officially on sale for $10, and seniors can purchase them during lunches in the senior corps from, starting yesterday to the 29th. Students that want to be Mr. Bobcat Contestants should be signed up by the end of today, and that show will take place on the Thursday of Spear Week, so next Thursday, the week before, the day before the pep rally. And the pep rally has a new format this year. It wasn't working out so well last year, so this year, we have the pep rally outside, and then we're going to have Faculty versus Student Gains, and then a smaller portion of Field Day where everyone's doing activities. There's a homecoming dance this year. It's gonna be October 21st, and this is for all classes. And class meetings have been happening this week, and for freshmen, this is extra important because their government process is beginning, so their officers are going to be elected. Voting is the 29th.
Great, thank you very much. And the next Finance Committee report?
We met the day after the last meeting we had, and it was interesting meeting, although we didn't dig too deep because we're still early in the budget process. We spent most of the time with Andy Lathrop discussing athletics, because originally, we had all talked about transporting students to sports that are off-campus, but it really got into a deeper discussion of what athletics costs in general. And as we're finding out with the market right now, our athletics costs are actually going up dramatically, where some sports, you know, are costing three to four times more than it did, you know, a year or two ago. So one of the things we're going to be looking at is, I think, what it, what the actual cost of a sport is, and if there should be some cost sharing involved, or if we had to do any budgetary adjustments for that, because there are certain things that we weren't aware of that just came up suddenly this year because, marketing, for example, golf has gone up a lot because the cost to go on a golf course nowadays is, not that you can't get the good deals you got before because it's such a sought-after tee time. We went over updated figures for CIP, which are still, still a work in progress, building values we discussed for our insurance policy, which I know is a concern of Michael, and he, and justifiably so, because as we're looking at our policies, some of these buildings were not valued properly, case of a total loss. So Sue Caswell is actually working on that. You'll see in your folder, you had what we had for a memo as far as budget drivers for this year. This is really the beginning of that budget process, is the budget drivers, because that's really what we focus on, is what is driving this budget as far as our major costs that we're going to have. So you see our negotiated agreements in there. Certain things are still to be determined, like our health insurance, how much is the middle school bond adding, certain positions that, they're coming off the grant and coming back into the operating budget. And then there's certain items that are yet to be discussed. But one thing I did wanna bring up, which was a surprise to a lot of people, even in my district, is the retirement rates are actually dropping for the next two years. They're not dropping dramatically, but they are dropping. That doesn't mean in two years from now, when they redo it again, it doesn't go through the roof, 'cause that's, that's when the economy now will actually be reflected in two years. So the last two years were a little bit better, so that's, actually saves the district $265,000 just using today's numbers. So we do have some savings. We do have, there is a silver lining in the cloud of, of this economy, so. And then we didn't really get into electric bus discussion because we're still waiting for numbers. The numbers we have right now just aren't what we really need, so we kinda table that until we get some numbers with shorter terms that be a little more, that'll fit in with our capital improvement project and our bus, our bus replacement policy, so. Otherwise?
As far as the increase in academic costs, I mean, not academic, athletic costs, excuse me, I understand something like golf, 'cause you have to, obviously, the golf course and their costs, but what accounts for some of the increases in maybe, say, basketball, or, you know, other sports, soccer, or something like that?
Well, the good thing about basketball is that we house it here.
Right.
That's, we control that cost. But then you're looking at, we go off-campus for ice time, for swimming, for things like that, that costs, those costs are going up. So we don't have a full idea of what it is. Anthony's putting that all together, but it's something that we have to look into. And I'm not saying we have to make adjustments to the sports, I'm just saying maybe budgetarily we probably have to make some adjustments, or we have to talk about cost sharing with the, with the students, so.
Well, I think I'll just pick one comment on that first. So one thing that we heard was that, you know, where students pay for athletic participation was established when, oftentimes when the sport was first started as a team, and the circumstances have changed over time, but those cost-sharing formulas really haven't. So, so why does, why does hockey cost this much? Why does swimming cost this much or not cost anything when, when sort of those costs, especially for outside facilities, have gone up in different ways, but substantially pretty much everywhere? I answered the question, it wasn't even asked. And we're meeting again on, on Monday night. This could be Monday, I think. Or maybe the next Monday. Before the next school board meeting. Anything else, Brian?
That's it.
Alright. We have one item on the Anops Consent Agenda tonight. Anybody want to discuss that separately? If not, I'll move for approval of the District Truant Officers for the 22, 23 school year as presented. You have a second for Brian? All those in favor? Six in favor, and the student rep in favor. Alright, that brings us down to our Discussion and Action items, and the first item here is the High School Elective System, and Principal Noe is going to present that. Our intent here tonight, this, this was, this topic in general is, originated from a Board member request to take a look at the High School elective process, or at least understand it better from, from a Board perspective. We've asked Principal Noe to give us an overview tonight. We can, the intent is to, to introduce the subject matter, give us, as the Board, the opportunity to ask some questions or raise topics for future discussion, and then we'll invite Principal Noe back for a specific in-depth discussion of those topics at a future meeting.
Basically, it's an overall program view. So if you go across the rows, it's by subject. And so the first row by grade is English. And so, for example, freshmen are required to take Essentials. In 10th grade, they have a choice. It's Monsters, Magic, or Mythical Figures, or they can choose Vision, and I forget the other word, Voices and Vision and Literature. And then after that, we have, I differentiate the word for elective because there are four credits of English, and so they have a required choice. They're required to take a credit of English in their junior and senior year, but it's a choice that they have by our elective system. So when I use required choice, I wanted to make sure you understood what that meant. And then the math row, and I didn't put any specific classes in there because depending on where kids are in math will depend on what they're gonna take each year. And so they could start in pre-algebra, they could start in Algebra I, they could start in geometry. So there is choice there also, but those are required choices. And then science, we have social studies. I separated out the four disciplines, the four major core disciplines, and then everything else will be a choice below that. And so for freshmen, they usually take EPW, but then they have two other choices in their freshman year. And so it's just trying to show by year, overall, what the four major disciplines are, and then where other choices are in their basic schedules. And there are seven of those because we have the seven classes in our daily schedule.
What's EPW?
Uh, Physical Science, or Physical Education, so PE. So these are the basic requirements as you move through the high school. And what I really wanted to point out about this slide was the bottom. Because we offer seven credits per year, and it's only 22 credits to graduate, but students have the opportunity for 28 credits if they were to take a class for every single period. That's not counting any ELOs, Extended Learning Opportunities, VLEX courses, or CATs, or anything they would take at UNH. This is just the Graduation Requirement worksheet that is in our Program of Studies. I just wanted that available to you also. And then what does elective mean? And so that's where we say we have an elective system, but again, some of those are required choices, and so we do refer to them as electives. And so I gave examples of required choices under math, 'cause especially if students move up, they have all types of math classes they can take that would fulfill that requirement. And then for English also, those are required choices they would take, but once they hit their junior and senior year, they have a plethora of choices that they can take. But in their fourth year of math, they have to have a math experience. So there are some students who choose an actual math class. It could be Algebra II, it could be AP Statistics, or they can take an experience, which is astronomy, chemistry, culinary. Those all qualify as a math experience in their fourth year. And then we have the list of regular types of electives, so I just tried to put different types of examples up of those. So this is a slide where we went through and looked at what we actually offer. So I'm gonna explain those numbers. So for 9th grade, there are 47 overall classes a student could choose from. That is including any of the regular math classes, plural, that a freshman could take. So Algebra I is in there, geometry is in there, accelerated geometry is in there, but they're going to choose one of those, right? And so the 26 electives are the actual pure electives that they could choose from. So those do not include their core classes. When you get into 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, especially of 11th and 12th, those classes, 128 for juniors, 135 for seniors, are all of the classes they could take. I did not include their required choice classes. So in those elective numbers, I did not include English classes, right, 'cause that's a required choice. I did not include math classes, because that's a required choice. I only included actual electives that they could choose. So I just want you to understand where those numbers are coming from. And then for CTE, I didn't include CTE in those numbers, but we do have 28 programs available through our three centers for CTE also. And then some examples of different schedules. And so what I did with the red was I just circled what the actual electives were, and then the yellow circles are just showing choices they have within their disciplines, the core disciplines. And then each year, progressively, there are more. And I changed to this horizontal view just because it, it won't fit on the, where I was trying to make it with so many classes they can choose from. So this is by semester, and so you have their whole year in front. There are less year-long courses that the 11th and 12th graders take. And then what I also did was I did put circles where they chose to have no class, so a free period, because that is a place where they could put an elective if they wanted to. And then I included as a last schedule slide, an example of CTE. And so one student was actually taking two different types of courses from CTE, for CTE, and the other student had her animal equine science in the morning and came back for the rest of the classes for the rest of the day. And just a note about our Program of Studies. We are always reviewing our programs. We look at every department. We actually start our scheduling in October, when you start talking, talking to department heads about what they might wanna look at for the Program of Studies for the next year. And at the same time, we are just finishing any students that might be wanting to drop classes or looking at their schedules. That process is ending right now in October, October 6th is the last day students can do that. So really, October's kinda the beginning and the end, so it is a yearly process as we move through master scheduling and working with kids with their schedules. Another note about this, last year, we sent out a music survey. This year, we are sending out an art survey, English survey, and social study survey to the kids. And it's really to look at what other types of electives are they interested in. So last year, through that music survey, we were able to add music production, and we were also able to add songwriting. So those are two new classes we're running this year based on student interest in the music program. And then, any questions?
So actually, and I, this probably would have been a better question to ask when we were going over the World Language curriculum, but I noticed that in the curriculum, it talks about like different levels of, say, the world language, like Spanish, but on the schedule, it still refers to like Spanish I, Spanish II. And so I guess I'm curious, like, how those, like, the levels in the curriculum correspond to the actual classes?
That's a great question. So we, the... So, um, we, the kids in level, level three, for instance, let's take level three Spanish, for instance, they could be freshmen, sophomores, juniors, or seniors in that class. Does that make sense? It could be, it could be, it's not grade, by grade, it's by level. So depending on the proficiency, is that what you were asking?
But, but like on the schedule right now, for example, I'm looking at the, the ninth or the 10th grade examples where it says Spanish I, Spanish III.
Yep.
Those correspond to the levels, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's not grade.
So they're not like the old, like Spanish one, two, three, four?
No, no, it's level, and it's based on proficiency, and there's variation within there. So there may be kids in level one proficiency, but may, maybe, um, maybe at a higher level of proficiency than other kids that are in that same course. So there's a lot of differentiation that happens within the world language department, but they are by level. It's not the traditional, you know, one, two, three, four, or nine, 10, 11, 12. Yeah.
So you could have someone, um, taking like a level span, you know, level four, even though they perhaps might be a sophomore or junior or whatever?
Yes.
Okay.
And we, we often see kids that are, kids that want to take multiple languages. You could have a senior taking Spanish I and, and French IV at the same time as their
The, um, half credit of art required for graduation, is that art or is it art and music?
Art, music, and theater.
Okay. And then the one credit of physical education, that's the required year-long phys ed for freshmen?
So most students do that through EPW. We do have a part where students in the music program, if they can't fit it in their schedule, they can take that at a later time. Or they can do electives instead of EPW in their sophomore, junior year, or even senior.
On the 11th grade, we had the CTE example. I think you said this, but I, I didn't catch it. What's going on on the left side where we have both automotive technology and building construction?
Oh, that student is actually taking two CTE programs at the CTE center. And so they stay there for a longer period of time, and they come back to the school later in the day.
So, so the, the, the times being listed as the same times is just an artifact of the way our schedule does it?
Most of the time. So this will go by our schedule, the way we put it in for blocks, but students will know if it's not, um, the way Power School works, we can't put the CTE times in there necessarily. But Mr. Peschel actually works with students and makes sure that when the buses run, when they come back, where they're supposed to be. We have all of that actually graphed out on paper and where they're supposed to be at all times.
In, in these two examples, the CTE courses are where the student starts their day. Is that usually the way it works?
Yes, most of the time. I, I mean, if I give you a percentage, I'd be making that up, but most of the students do start during the morning or at the morning and go off. And then there are a couple that go in the afternoon. I think there might be five, and a couple that are at the end of the day.
Okay. Thank you. Others? All right. So if there are follow-up questions from the board or topics for deeper discussion, please send those to Dr. Morris or to Wendy, and we'll, we'll put those on the agenda for a future meeting.
Sorry, I had another question.
Sure.
Um, if we wanted to sort of peruse the catalog of classes at the high school, is that on the website?
It's on the counseling part of the website, the program of studies, yes. And then we're currently going to start working on the new program of studies, which should come out in early January.
I just want to say thank you because it was really helpful. I particularly appreciated the sample schedules. Those were really helpful to see how it actually works. And student, do you feel like I'm putting Paige on the spot, but it's kind of, it kind of represents a good, like how it works for you?
Yeah, one of those schedules looks just like mine. Very accurate.
Thank you.
I did try to make them random. I would pick a grade and kind of scroll really fast and pick a student. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Paige, from a student perspective, you know, navigating from freshman to senior year, you have that experience. Have you found it difficult, easy, someplace in between? Did you find you had to meet with your counselor a lot? How did, how did that process work?
I think it's really easy because your freshman year, everything is so structured. You can't get confused and you're not overwhelmed by choices. But then, as your sophomore and junior and senior year hit, then you're like, okay, I really want these choices, and you have them. So it's really helpful. And it's so easy to change your classes that even if I do need to make a few appointments to switch things up at the beginning of the year, I've had a lot of appointments, it's like two seconds. It's really easy and yeah, it's great.
All right, excellent. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent search planning committee. So you have a memo in the packet from me. We had a, a goal in our school board goals for this school year to plan the superintendent search by April 30th, uh, 2023. So that the rest of 2023 and into the 23, 24 school year, we are executing that, that search. After some further discussion with Dr. Morse, um, you know, Dr. Morse made the recommendation that some of those activities related to selection, if we were to select a search firm to work with us, if we were to do some community listening, staff listening sessions, that those may need to start in the latter part of this school year. And so that planning process probably needs to be accelerated a little bit with a target date that you see here of, of March 1st rather than, so the end of February or the start of March rather than the end of April for that, for that planning process. So what I'm proposing tonight is that we establish an ad hoc committee to do this, this planning activity. There's a list of topics that I was, you know, that made sense to me that we would ask the committee to tackle, although we can certainly discuss, add to that, delete from that. And then I suggested membership for the committee of myself and Denise and Dan. So that's, that's the proposal, is to establish an ad hoc committee to report back. There will be some interim reports, I presume, as the committee did its work, and then, and then a final report back by, by March 1st. Any discussion? If, if there's no discussion, we look for a motion to authorize the committee.
Would we get reports on that process, kind of like the finance committee reports, as far as, as far as how, where it's, I guess, benchmarks or something like?
How the work of the committee is going as it goes along?
Yeah.
Absolutely. So as a board, as a board-appointed committee, even as an ad hoc committee, it needs to follow all of the RSA 91A things. So there'll be posted meetings, there'll be minutes. And, and yeah, I think we would just, we would probably add it to the other section of the agenda for, for either, either the other section or the other committee reports, uh, committee update section of the. I, I don't expect there to be a whole lot of meetings for this one. I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I often underestimate, you're laughing already, but I, I'm, I'm not expecting this to be a, you know, an every other week sort of thing like the finance committee is this time of year.
I think it will, it will lead up to a lot of meetings. This is just structuring the process.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. I will motion to appoint the, tired of acronyms, the SSPC, the Superintendent Search Planning Committee, as staffed by Michael Williams, Denise Day, and Dan Klein as proposed.
All right. We have a motion from Heather, we have a second from Dan. Further discussion? All those in favor? Six in favor and the student rep in favor. So we'll get that committee going. Thank you. The next item is, is a discussion of the budget goal input to the finance committee. Brian, do you want to tee this one up or you want me to?
Yes. Every year, at least every year since I've been here, and Al's been involved in the process, I can't speak for Denise, she's been here the longest, but, uh, every year we try to find guidelines where, when we start designing the budget, what we want to see for options. Generally, it's a, it's a spread of about 1%. Say it's, you know, three, 3.5, and 4%, you know, where we feel comfortable to be. So what we generally do is kind of ask if those numbers are what we're looking, is something you're comfortable with. It does help us in the design process so we can know, um, where we're going to fall. I mean, generally, the lower one is to see what, I hate to use the term, but hate to see what we have to lose, uh, because we'd have to give something up to usually get it. But where we feel comfortable this year going with the budget. I know generally, we've always fallen in the three to three and a half percent range. I'm going to make adjustments after that, but we want to make sure that everyone understands how we get to that number, whether it includes revenues or not. So, um, I guess, so that's kind of the discussion we're looking for. Usually what it does includes all the funds and articles recommended by the board, and then we can use our revenue and reserve accounts to offset expenses as we have in previous years. So is that a, um, a path we want to follow again? Or is it something different that the board would like to see?
I'm, I guess my only question is, given the inflation rate, you know, is it, and I have no idea, I really, I'm just asking the question, is 4.1 as a higher, is, is that realistic? Because we know the cost of everything is kind of going through the roof.
Well, so what we have here is the, was the budget goal for this, establishing the current year budget, so just as an example. I think that's part of what, I mean, this will be a major topic of the, of the finance committee's work at its next meeting, because we need to bring back a, you know, a proposed goal for the board to review and hopefully approve at the, at the October 6th board meeting in order to let the administration do the, do the planning work. So, um, so far, there's been no discussion of what those numbers should be. I guess I, I'm thinking, one important question here is what should the structure of the goal be? Are we happy with the way it was structured last year? Do we like, because I think, like, like Brian said, I think every year we've done this, we've tweaked the structure of the goal a little bit. You know, do we like having three different numbers to give to the administration to work with? Do we want to just give them one number to work with? Do we, uh, do we agree that we want to look at this from a total expense perspective? Or do we want to look at it from, you know, a net tax impact, which we tried once, but that's much more complicated? Those are the kind of the questions, I think, we want to see if there's any, any opinions from the board to send back to the finance committee.
In other words, would you like the process we've done in previous years? And do you want to follow it? I guess, put it simply.
So I, I definitely think I liked having options. I mean, at least two options, three, you know, three I thought was good last year because it really helped us to see, you know, this is what we can get if we do this, or this, or this. And I think particularly in light of inflation, I think it's important to show us a range. And then as far as, I definitely don't think we should go to the tax. That was really complicated and I just, you know, I don't think it worked really well. I think last year was fine. I know in, in some years past, you know, we've done it a little, we, as you say, we've always tweaked it. And I could basically support anything that the, the budget committee feels is appropriate, except that I really don't think it's, it's, I think it's very complicated when we're trying to get to the ultimate tax rate.
Yeah, that's pretty much shooting a moving target, which we're never going to get. And I don't recommend that either. I don't think we would, I think we were kind of in agreement that that was not an appropriate path to take in setting a goal.
Did that structure work well for the committee last year? Or are you in need of suggestions?
Well, it worked well for the board overall because you could kind of see the low end, you can see the high end, and you kind of get your comfort level in there, and then we open up the discussion as we get closer. And by, was it early December? I think we finally narrowed it down. We're usually the last, you know, the last meeting before we set the budget, that's going to go into the deliberation session, is, you know, what can we live with, what can we live without, what do we agree upon? You know, it's not always unanimous, but, you know, it's pretty close. So, and it's really what your comfort level is, and you can ask all the questions, so.
Did, comment?
So from us, uh, administrative perspectives, so in mine, I felt that last year's budget goal was the, the most clear that we've worked with over the years. The more complicated it gets, the more frustrated, um, board members and administration get because we may be coming at it. We think we're coming at it the way the board wanted us to come at it, and then we get to that stage where we're trying to fine tune and we realize the way we were interpreting the goal was different. This goal from last year was crystal clear. Sue and I had no problem understanding what our message was from the board, and we presented the three options, and the board then could deliberate on, on that. And then when the revenue was finally, um, out there, which is very late in the process, the board then deliberated on the impact. But it was, building the budget this way is very clear for the business manager and the superintendent.
One of the challenges with the process is that we don't get our revenue side from the state until the middle of November. And at that point, we want to have done most of the budgeting process already. So what, the way this worked last year, and part of the reason I think it worked well was that we had, we had a good sense of where we wanted to be from an expense perspective before that. And then we essentially took, looked at the state funds and said, all right, well, how do we, are we comfortable with, with what, what that would mean in terms of local tax burden? And that we adjusted based on use of reserve funds. So we used the reserve funds to kind of, you know, make that final adjustment to the, where we were comfortable with from a, from a tax rate perspective or a tax, tax burden perspective, not directly the rate. So, so, but at this point, at this level of the, of the budget goal, we were really looking at the bottom line as how much do we spend? So. All right, I think that's.
I personally like the expense side and making the goal relative to those expenses. It makes a lot of sense, and people sort of get a feel for that just intuitively of, you know, my salary raise would say maybe this this year, and my cost of living adjustment was this. And people are used to seeing numbers that build year over year in that manner, and I think it makes a lot of sense to try to keep things in flavors that people are used to.
Yeah, and I would just throw in that I think last year's process was the best process that I've experienced as a member of the board. As Michael was saying, it really, the, the certainty that it provided eliminated a lot of the sort of rushed last minute, um, brainstorming that we had done in years past. And that's definitely something you want to avoid when you're going into a budget. So I think it worked really well, and unless something dramatic changes, I think it's a path we should follow.
I, I didn't come in to this evening prepared to talk about what the numbers should be for that goal. The, the hard copy memo that you have from Dr. Morse and Sue about budget drivers is the type of input that the finance committee often uses when it's looking at what, what goals to recommend. You know, what are the, what are the, you know, the costs that we're already obligated to for next year as, as initial drivers of, of where we think the budget is going to be going? But if anybody has any further thoughts about that, sharing them now or providing them to Dr. Morse between now and, and the next few days would be, would be helpful input to the committee as well. I think this has been a good, this is a good baseline for us. All right, great, thank you. The next item on our discussion items is described as Oyster River hiring practice in response to hypothetical adverse events. And what this, where this comes from is looking at recent events in, in Greenland and wanting to take a look at our own practices and really ask the question of, how do we make sure that we've done what we can to reduce the chance of those kind of situations happening in our district with our kids, with our, with our process? And so we asked Dr. Morse to, to take a look at that and, and give us a review.
So I reviewed this again today with Wendy, and I said, you know, this is something we should hand off to the next superintendent because it's a very comprehensive step-by-step process. And, you know, usually I would want to read into the public record what's here, but it's fairly detailed. I think that the, the major issues involved here in the hiring process is that everybody is fingerprinted. And so we get FBI checks, we get state police checks. If a person has no history, perhaps this is the situation that happened in a neighboring district, if they had no history, we would not know that proclivity exists. So the FBI checks and the state police checks were instituted maybe five or six years ago. And it was very clunky at first and it took a long time. It's much more efficient today. We could have been waiting six, eight weeks for fingerprint results. So every contract we issue is contingent on the fingerprint results. So in this job market, what I'm seeing is more results, but in talking to our attorneys, you know, if it's a, the person is 33 and it was a misdemeanor when they were 18, and it isn't something that has any intervening record. when they were 18, and it isn't something that has any intervening record, and it doesn't apply to the job they're applying for, then, you know, we tend to look at that and say, okay, so this is something that happened when they were young, they made a stupid mistake, and there's nothing to show that that's continued. So we try to be, an understanding there, I mean, if we eliminated everybody with a misdemeanor, we probably lose about 20% of the applicants at this point in this job market. Somebody has a felony, I'm not hiring them. If somebody has, you know, a DUI and they want to apply for a bus driving position, I'm not hiring them. So the fingerprinting is really the key to our hiring process. The other piece that I would tell you is we faithfully check references. No one gets hired without the principal or director checking three references. Those references are recorded on paper and they're put in the file. So if an administrator comes to me and says, I want to hire, you know, Mrs. Smith, and they haven't done the reference check, then I won't, I won't go forward with it until they've done the reference check. There have been times when I've done the reference check because the administrator's workload was too much, or they are away, but they're always done, 100% of the time. So that's the other safety valve we have. It's not unusual for us to go off script. So say somebody gives us three references and we know that school system, or we know that principal, or we know that superintendent, and they weren't listed as a reference, we'll call them. So just because somebody gives you three references, it doesn't mean that those are the only three you check. Invariably, somebody's going to give you the names of people who love them. And so, you know, we are, we are pretty cautious about that as well. Then the process, so, you know, it's not, in the 10 years I've been here, I've used this process. We've had to let people go for a variety of reasons. And so if an issue comes up, the first thing I do, if I think it's going to be, result in a significant disciplinary issue, either letting somebody go, or writing letters of reprimand, or putting them on unpaid or paid leaves of absences, all of those start with a call to the attorney. This is what I'm hearing. We're going to put this person immediately out, and it's always out unpaid administrative leave. And the issue always haunts people is, why are we paying them to be out? Because they haven't been found guilty of anything yet. So we have to be careful about that process. It's a very litigious process. It's guided by not just state law and federal law, but also by the negotiated contract agreements. If it turns out that it's a Title IX issue, then we involve Catherine because she's our Title IX designated person. If it's a criminal issue, we inform the police and the Department of Education. So if the accusation is what we saw in Greenland, that moment after I get done talking to the attorney, the next call is to the police, the next call is to the Department of Education. So that's always. We have to be careful because every employee has a right to constitutional due process. So if somebody's accused, part of the process in terms of investigating, talking to witnesses, is also allowing them to provide their side of the story. If you skip that process, you will be, it'll end up in a grievance or a lawsuit. Every person has a right to say, that didn't happen. Even if the preponderance of evidence that you've got says it did happen, you have to have on record that you talked to them. That's due process. And then the last part of that whole process, again, is going right back to the school's attorney. Here's what we found, here's our determination. We write a determination letter to the employee, and it could result in them losing their job, it could result in an action plan, it could result in a letter of reprimand, it could result in a leave without pay, depending on what's going on. If it involves anything untoward towards children, it'll end up in dismissal. There's just no getting around that. We're going to protect kids with every ounce of our energy. So that's kind of the way we operate. It's very detailed, but it's detailed for a reason, both on the front end and the back end. So questions from the board?
Regardless of whether an employee falls under a CBA or whatever position they are, there's still, there's a probationary period that every employee has when they start here, right? So in case anything pops up in that.
Anything happens in the probationary period, we just say sayonara. So I had, I had a case of a misdemeanor where the gentleman I was talking to was in his early 30s, his offense was in his early 20s. I meet with anybody who comes back with a state or FBI report. Yep, that was youth, it's not happening anymore. And the very next week, he gets pulled over by the police for this offense that happened when he was 21. So the next day, he's in my office, and I'm saying, this isn't going to work for me. So yes, probationary period means that you, they're still working at the discretion of the employer, there's no contractual protections. Thanks, Brian.
When you're in the disciplinary process, I know every situation is different, but how long does it take to work through those steps?
Unless the employee comes right out and says, I did it, I apologize, and you say, well, apology's accepted, but you're done. It can take a long time, Michael, to talk through the issues. These are very complicated issues that have all kinds of side issues that are impacting what you're doing. For example, the Department of Education under the current commissioner is very aggressive in dealing with discipline issues. And so the first thing I do after I've talked to our attorney is to talk, to let their legal arm know that we're investigating. And their first response usually is, keep us posted. But they have been known across the state, to stick themselves right in the middle of investigation. They do that, it complicates everything enormously because they don't actually have a legitimate role until we have our findings. So if they step in early, and this has happened across New Hampshire, it just takes things to another whole level. I had a colleague who was reporting to the department, and within two hours, the state police was in his office. And he thought they were there because he had reported the situation. They were there to investigate the process he used to get to the phone call. So it can get really wonky if they have, if they lawyer up, if they bring in the union. We, you know, the union, as you know, we have a really great relationship with them. But their job at that point is to make sure I'm dotting my i's and crossing my t's. So that can add to the length of a conversation. And then the determination piece, if it's not crystal clear, makes it difficult. So it's, you know, where do you come in on a discipline issue where the preponderance of evidence sort of kind of maybe does support the complaint, but not really? And then you get into that whole thing of, that's why the lawyers are so important. We have to go through all of our evidence with them. So it can be a short period of time if an employee just says, yep, that's me, I did that. Or it can be an incredibly long period of time as we go through all of the legal hoops.
I would also add that you could have multiple investigations going at the same time. You have a criminal investigation, a DOE investigation, and they both move at different paces. You can get cleared on one end, but then there could be, say, an ethics violation on the other one that could take some time for the DOE to get in there. So it's not, I've seen, I've seen ones that you think will be done in three days that take, you know, four or five months. So, I mean, it's, it really depends on who's involved and what speed they're moving at.
And I think it's important for the board to know that we are running our investigation independent of law enforcement. Because they have a job and we have a job. They're completely different jobs. And even if they talk to the same witnesses we have, we're not colluding with the police department. We're independent, we're doing our job because we have a responsibility to do that investigation as a school system. They have a responsibility to do an investigation as a legal arm of the judicial system. As much as it looks kind of similar, distinctly different purposes.
So in that situation, are you using a standard of more likely than not, or similar to the police beyond the shadow of a doubt?
We don't use shadow of doubt. We use, they use, and I wish you hadn't asked me that right now, Brian, because there's two different levels of, Brian, you know what they are. The level that the police use is.
Beyond a reasonable doubt.
Beyond a reasonable doubt. We're just using preponderance of evidence. It's a lower standard.
So more likely than not type of thing?
Okay. Yeah. Thanks for that, Brian.
Denise?
I was just thinking about the complication now of the whole prohibited subjects through, you know, the DOE. And I believe I just was reading that the first couple have now been, like complaints have been made at the DOE. Because that's, that's a situation where a complaint can go directly to the DOE.
That's right.
Yeah.
It can go to the DOE, it can go to the judicial system, it can go to the Office of Civil Rights. Doesn't, and then our responsibility as a school system is still to investigate. But when this law passed two years ago, we sat with our attorney and we, we basically, with our DEIJ committee guidance, we built a template so that if a complaint is made, I would do that investigation because I'm obligated to by law. But it also is an obligation of those three branches of government. And it's, it's just interesting because I haven't seen anything go through any of those levels yet. So we don't really know what it'll all mean, I think ultimately, I mean, a lawsuit. But yeah, we have, we have a process laid out if we get a complaint that we'll follow through.
How much of the disciplinary process that you've outlined here is, you know, unique to Oyster River or district procedure versus driven by either state regulation or law?
Well, it's all driven by state regulations and federal law, but it's also, components are unique to us. You know, the faithfulness of reference checks, for example. I cannot tell you how many times, Michael, in my career here in New Hampshire and in Maine, people are hired that we have let go with no reference check. Just, I don't know who they talked to, but they didn't talk to the current, the previous employer. That happens all the time. What used to happen that was, is pretty horrific, at the beginning of my career, it was not unusual for a person to find themselves in jeopardy. And they would just shown the door and no police report was ever reported. Right from the beginning of my career, I've always faithfully reported issues to the police departments because they need to know. I also, if necessary, will chase after somebody's certificate. I don't want them back in a classroom someplace else. And that's why the FBI checks were actually instituted in New Hampshire. Because if you had an offense in Maine or Massachusetts and you wanted to run away from those two states, New Hampshire's a logical place to go to. And, you know, you're starting with a clean record if you're basing it on state reports. So the FBI checks have really proved to be invaluable. So some of this is unique to me, unique to the district, but most of it is spelled out in contracts or law.
Thank you for walking us through this. I want to emphasize that this was, this really was based on, you know, an abundance of caution and looking at things that are, have happened in other districts, not based on anything that we've seen recently in Oyster River. Is there anything that has changed about this process recently, say, in the last two years? Is there anything that you've changed about the way you approach?
No, because Teresa Poirier, who's our HR coordinator, does a great job. And she will, she will absolutely call me and say, hey, Jim, you know, I've got this employee being, you know, promoted by a principal or a director. I don't have the reference checks. I say, I'll take care of it, Teresa. And they get a call, say, can't move it, we're not moving it to the board till you get that done. Now, we do hire on the contingency of the fingerprints because if we didn't, for example, we would not have many positions filled in the fall because it takes a bit of time to get them back from the state police. Better than they used to be, by far, but still takes time.
All right. Other questions for Dr. Morse? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Last item on our discussion items tonight is the district role in election information policy. Denise?
So a previous conversation that the board had in terms of what to do about information about candidates for a school board and the forum that the, you know, PTO has sponsored in the past and that sort of thing. And the policy committee was asked to take a look at it. So we did and kind of talked about different options and basically came up, and this was Dr. Morse that wrote this up, but basically came up with the idea that perhaps we should provide minimal information. And, you know, as I said, Dr. Morse came up with this wording to bring to the board for discussion.
So if I could just back Denise up. So one of the issues that we face if we get too generous with our access is that once we say yes to Matt and Heather in this previous election, we would have to say yes to anybody. You know, so the five candidates that ran in the last election, I'll find people, that's great. But what if one of the people who was running was, you know, a serial rapist? Just as, we would still have to say yes if we start posting on our website. You don't have the ability to choose, you know, Nazi, Republican, Democrat, all goes up. So that was a serious concern of mine and actually Michael's as well. So I contacted our attorney, and she said, well, put up the information that you asked them to submit to run. So the form that we're using as an R document is the form that Matt and Heather filled out last, last winter. And so just taking that information and putting it up is harmless because we're not promoting anything other than the fact you're running. And then encouraging community members at that point to seek out the information on their own. And that way, we don't have to jeopardize our integrity nor put ourselves in legal jeopardy. So I was trying to find a place where we could put up this minimal information to let the world know that Matt and Heather were running. But beyond that, it would have been up to the community member to seek out Facebook pages or, you know, some kind of social media where you posted your stuff. So that's what I was trying to accomplish with this.
When I first brought this up, it wasn't as much as putting them on the website, but it was more to, I don't know if that's the proper term, but to guide the process only because I wanted to make sure that we utilized district technology. Because I know that was an issue.
Sure.
In the last couple of years. That was more important, very important. And also not controlling the process, but just guiding it because there were certain questions that were asked that probably weren't really germane to, because it was already an issue that's been dealt with, but they just weren't aware of it. So maybe there's some little bit of guidance that can be there. But more importantly, I think it was just to use, make sure we can give everyone a good taste of whoever is running by using district technology to do that. Because I know it was, it was all types of issues going on the last couple of years with that. I mean, obviously, COVID threw a rock in the middle of most of that, but, you know.
Yeah, Matt actually came up with a really great idea in our conversation about how to proceed. Part of the confusion is that the PTOs are, you know, sharing this responsibility in and out each year. So one year it's the high school, next year it's the middle school, next year it's, you know, Massway, and then next year it's Mohairamet. And they get caught off guard because it is a pretty intense process. And Matt had suggested the possibility of my meeting with the PTOs and saying, why don't we just have a standing committee, one from each school, that is in charge of the process, which would get that unpredictability, oh, it's my turn kind of, you know, reaction because they really do a good job. Just really outstanding job. And then in terms of hosting a forum, absolutely, we can host the forum, you know, and for them, and we can use our technology, that's not a problem. It's just that we have to be super careful. I mean, again, when we host a forum, if somebody's radical on that forum, they're radical on that forum. But it's, all we're doing is providing the technology, we're not advocating one way or the other.
And the challenge too is those PTOs are constantly changing.
Yep.
So the people that leave, that were, they're great, will leave eventually as their kids age. So the people that leave, they're great, will leave eventually as their kids age out, and will bring in new ones that may not be familiar at all with the process. Like you said, you can get caught off guard, they're like, oh, I didn't realize I had to do this. But I think if we do get them all together, I think that will be a lot easier because you're being able to pass it along as time goes, and some of those will stay in the PTOs as their kids go up. So I think that's a good process to follow.
If we're going to do, provide district support that way, I think that should be part of the policy as well. If we do work with the PTOs, and I don't know, like Brian said, that's a tradition that goes back before I was on the board, and I don't know if the PTOs are still interested in that or not. But, you know, because it is the PTO, does the district, can we limit the number of forums that the district facilitates from a technology or production perspective to how do we bound even that? You know, if somebody else comes and says, I want to host a forum, you know, to me, it comes with some of the same risks as any other sort of publishing information.
So I agree with what Michael said, is if we are going to provide support, it should be codified in the policy. And the second bit is the PTO's manning the debates as they were, the forums, is actually kind of new within the past, say, three years. Because prior to that, it was the PTO's provided cookies for the candidates' night and someone else would moderate the forum, and there'd be three people who came, and I think one year Michael did it because someone wasn't available or Michael was the only candidate, I can't remember which way that went. So the PTO's doing it is actually relatively new within the past three years, I believe. So yes, it is kind of a surprise when it circles around. But I agree, it should be codified. The technology support should be codified. And then we also, last year, we had the debate team host the candidates, which was great. But the schools, the district also provided some IT support for that as well. And so that also needs to be bounded in terms of who we help and how many, for the candidates as well, who all is wanting pieces of them.
So if the PTOs, first of all, you know, we have to be independent. So if the PTOs ask a question that they want to ask, they're asking that question. We're not editing their work. But I also thought about the option of, if the PTOs didn't want to do it, it would be, I think, pretty cool to have the students do it. Because they have the debate team, they also have the Senate. I mean, it could be something that becomes a tradition of the students hosting it. I would just want to make sure that adults were there just in case somebody gets crazy. Because I don't want the kids to be subjected to craziness.
I would just worry about the elementary school aged parents not having enough input. That's why, I know the PTOs do a ton of work, but having one member of each PTO form a committee at the beginning of the year and kind of operate one forum, however that's codified or layout, would ensure that each age group is being represented.
I think it's also important we ask the PTOs if this is something they're interested in because, to my knowledge, no one has asked any of us.
We're just having the conversation now. Let's say, bring them, I mean, Matt's idea just was maybe a week old. It's on my list of things to do.
I do think it's worth verifying with counsel if we do want to work with PTOs or any other group, can we bound the number of groups or the, you know, bound groups by district affiliation or something that we do that for?
I would think that, just off the top of my head, like having a previously established affiliation would be an easier way to not limit the number of groups, but to keep control over who is representing the district.
Even then, I don't know. I never want to be in the position of choosing, having to make that kind of choice.
Okay. I'll have a check on that, Michael.
All right.
All right, thanks for that feedback.
Good input to the policy committee there? All right. That brings us to the end of our discussion and action items. Next up is school board committee updates. Are there any committee updates that we haven't touched on already?
The Health and Wellness Committee is meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM on Teams. 4:00 PM, sorry, on a Teams meeting.
Sue, are we still having a Sustainability Committee meeting next week? I think the Sustainability Committee meeting on the 28th.
All right. Public comment? Anybody for public comment? Nope. Our closing actions, you've got future meeting dates listed here. Note that the next school board meeting is on a Thursday, it's October 6th. It is still right here. The following meeting, October 19th, is back on a Wednesday, but that one is in the Masway School in the cafeteria. And then we have the Budget Workshop, which is in the morning on the 27th, starting at 8:00 in the morning. I also received a note today from Deanna Ray, who's the superintendent in Barrington, and they are intending to invite us to meet with them in Barrington sometime in November, but they're still looking at specific dates. All right. That brings us to the end of the public part of the agenda. We do have one item for non-public session related to emergency preparedness, and then following adjournment, we have a non-meeting session related to strategy negotiations with respect to collective bargaining. So I will move that we enter non-public session pursuant to New Hampshire RSH, Chapter 91A, 3, Roman numeral 2, and this is, I don't have the full text, but it is I, matters related to emergency preparedness. A second from Matt, this requires a roll call vote.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Denise Stay, yes.
Brian Sosteros, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
All right, it will be a non-public session. Thank you.